We're good?
We're good.
That's exciting.
Okay. You guys ready? We'll open the meeting officially, and I will yield the floor to Deputy Mayor Marie Early. She is very eager to get going. She really hates when we slow things down.
Yes.
Take the floor over.
Okay.
Take it away.
Okay, so the purpose of the meeting tonight is for the Code Update Committee to turn over their work product and any information associated with that to the Village Board. From this point on, it will be the Village Board's responsibility to conduct public hearings, to review the materials that you've prepared, to get any public input on those materials. And one letter has been received thus far. Michael Reesman's letter has been received, and I will make sure that the Village Board has a copy of that letter. So the responsibilities will be to conduct public hearings, public meetings, to receive input, to determine what changes the Village Board feels are appropriate to the materials that you're turning over. Go forward with a public hearing concurrently. There will be a secret that will be conducted by Green Plan, and once the public hearing is completed, and my expectation is that that may take a couple of meetings because of the volume of the changes, once the public hearing is completed, the Village Board will have to evaluate the feedback that was received at the public hearings, decide what to incorporate or not to the materials, and then eventually file with the Department of State, at which point the materials will become part of the village law, the village code. So with that, tonight we have Michael Reesman, Karen Doyle, and Paul Henderson, who are the members of the Code Update Committee, to present their results.
Before we move on, I don't understand the secret and why it's not a neg deck and why we can't, and why so much is involved in it.
Primarily, and I'm giving you a non-legal answer, and I will refer to our legal counsel on this, much of what the village, much of the materials deal with land use. And land use is one of the topics, I believe, that says you have to do a full secret. So that's my understanding.
From all my experience at that, I don't think that's true. I mean, there's buildings that go up, or buildings that have been done that, I mean, if there's nothing, if the environment isn't being affected, then I think it'd be considered a neg deck, no?
Well, the neg deck is a determination of secret, so you still have to go through the process.
Oh, yeah.
You can't make a negative declaration unless you have a secret process, so I think that's what.
Okay, it seemed like, it just seemed like this was more extensive than what I remember a neg deck entailing, unless I was not...
Yeah, well, if you're gonna, if you're making that determination, someone has...
And that could be determined by a board in some cases.
Right, but someone has had to make, fill out the secret documents.
Right.
Like, you can't, the neg deck is a determination in the secret process.
And speaking as a layperson, I'm not here as a lawyer, I'm here as a resident of Cold Spring.
Thank you.
Me too. I'm also a resident, yes, I'm not representing the village or anything like that, yes.
You know, I think the question is how, how deep the quote-unquote "secret" process is, and that's, that's to Karen's point, is if there's a, if it's a type-one action, it's, you know, as defined in secret, it's, it's deep.
Right.
If it's a type-two action, it's less deep, much less deep.
So the neg deck, just so I'm clear, it's like, it just seemed like when I was hearing what was involved there, that, who was taking care of that or whatever, it seemed a lot more complicated than I remember. So basically, it's filling out a form here if it's a neg. I know that it's a lot more complicated.
Well, you start the process with the form.
Okay.
And then, depending on the answers to the questions, it may become more complex.
And our legal counsel, John First, has indicated that this will require an in-depth evaluation. We're talking, we have a new chapter on steep slopes, so we're identifying what cannot be done. We're changing zoning districts. We're eliminating some, we're adding some. We're changing the zoning setbacks. We're changing a number of things that have to do with land use, and that is what pushes us into the more extensive secret evaluation.
Yeah, I'll talk to John.
Feel free to do so.
Thank you. I'm glad. Okay on that.
And John has even provided us with an estimate of the number of hours it will take to perform the secret.
I think that's what I was looking at, and why I felt like it was extensive.
We, we are recommending extensive changes to the village code.
I know, but I'd like to understand why if it's not, basically, you're not changing or if it can be mitigated, then, anyway, I won't get into that argument. I want to hold everyone up on that. I'll talk to John on it. So welcome, everyone, and thank you for coming, and thank you for all the work you've done. Absolutely, I know how much of a hard job it is, and I totally appreciate it. I probably have a couple of things I wouldn't agree on, and hopefully don't take that personally, but I do appreciate all the work, and it's a, it's a huge task you guys stuck on, and you did a great job, so thank you in advance. We're almost there.
So we're three left from, I don't know how many cycled through the Code Update Committee, but I would say maybe between eight and 12.
I would say closer to 15.
Fifteen, yeah. So they're really, you know, they did a lot of this work, too. It's not just us that did it. We've been involved in a portion of it, and certainly last several presentations, but before that, there was a lot of work done by others. And I would be wholly remiss in not acknowledging Marie Early's absolutely essential role in pulling it all together and giving us kind of captain's guidance along the way as well. She's really done like the mainstay of the whole, the whole process.
Yeah, I think Marie deserves it.
Yes.
I just wanna say, like, how, you know, as you all know, like, how mind-numbing it can be to read code, much less proofread code and organize code and organize lists of changes and assemble the materials for the, especially the most recent public presentation, the culmination phase five. I mean, that was a labor of love that Marie did.
Thank you.
And to keep, keep the committee together, and I think, you know, it's five years, right?
Yes.
Just the start.
2014, October.
Was the first group.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
And I think it was nine people at the time.
It was big, yeah.
Yes.
So, I don't know how much of the materials that you've read, and I'm kind of coming from the last presentations that we've had that have been a summary of that, so I'm gonna try to briefly go through that. The comprehensive plan was adopted by the village in 2012. The local waterfront revitalization strategy was completed in 2011, so just before that. The local waterfront revitalization program was completed in 2014. Now, the thing is that, when the state reviewed it, the state said that in order to actually adopt it, that they had to go through a code rewrite. So then that's when NYSRDA came, stepped in, and a grant was, was obtained in order to have NYSRDA fill out, basically, a kind of a program for the Code Update Committee to follow. And that, you can see this is a fairly well-worked list here, but that included a use category that had all kinds of things involved, and we can get into that if you have an interest. An appearance category, environment category, procedures category, and then this last one, which is the final step that you guys are gonna be taking over, is the consistency and clarity category. And that's the one that we just most recently presented. That one, as well as going through Chapter 134, went through all of the chapters. Not all of them were changed. There were some that were left alone. I think Shopping Cart stayed.
No, Shopping Cart's changed.
And I have that list actually here, so we can get to that. But there were a very few chapters that were left untouched. But what we did is went through and, and did a full read of 134 and tried to make sure that everything worked together. A lot of the changes that were looked at, that were made, had to do with gender neutrality, for example. So there was a point, I remember reading in the code, that if you were a male doctor, you could have a private office in a residential street, but who knows if you were a woman, if you could.
You had to change that, didn't you?
Movement of specific fees to master fee schedule, so that they're not actually in, embedded in the code, so that they can be changed. Marie was very good at correcting the grammar and spelling and punctuation and formatting. I'm sure that we'll find more as we have to go through and make more revisions, or as you do. Corrections to references, so references between different parts of the code. And then coming to terms with, deciding whether or not it was gonna be a building inspector and/or a code enforcement officer, in order again to make, make for consistency in that language. As I said, we did go through all of the chapters, although we didn't, we weren't, we're involved in everything. We also got input from the Water and Wastewater Superintendent, you all, I think weighed in on some of the things. I remember seeing some of the emails back and forth. The Chair of the Planning Board, the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Village Council, of course. Greenway was, my Greenway.
Green Plan.
Green Plan was also instrumental in giving us advice along the way. So we went through the code. I need to read to you what all those chapters were. The chapters with no recommended changes were Assessment of Property, Defense and Indemnification, Public Records Access, Alcoholic Beverages, we didn't change that. Bush, Grass, and Weeds, Filming and Audio-Visual Productions, which I know you have been, you know, dealing with along the way. Fire Prevention Prevention, Nuisances, and Parades. Those are the ones that were not touched. There are future changes, and I know that even on the map that we did as a, as a kind of a general map, there are going to be questions on that, because there's this one property down here that we don't know where the property line is, so we can't figure out where to divide it, if it's gonna be divided. And I'm sure that there's gonna be a fair amount of discussion about this particular map.
That's the Campbell property?
That's the Campbell property. What this new map reflects, it was not on, on any other previous map, was it was this new area called Parks and Recreation, which is in green. But there are going to be other changes. We made some minor changes to properties where we took them from one district to another. And at the same time, we went through and where the, where it was I-1, went through property lines. It now actually follows, it no longer exists for proposing it to change it, but, but at least all of the districts follow property lines.
Yeah, and that's a specific example, you know, the extent, basically, the, what was, or what today still is, I-1, the Marathon property, that, that, that district continued all the way to Rock Street, kind of cutting through property lines, just because that's, that's the way it was a long time ago. Yeah, or the, that's the way the line was drawn, and we didn't think that makes a whole lot of sense.
Right. So before, it used to go to this one pride, those properties there, kind of on Campbell End, like through those properties across the boulevard.
That's right.
You school.
Yeah.
Just cut through.
Interesting.
There were very few places in the village that was out there, but that was one of them. The other one was, was where the, this property cut, so this, where the current foundry, it used to actually cut right through all these properties, too. So some of them were in I-1, which is what this is currently, and some of them were in Harlan. And we also went through, the last thing was we went through the, the table of dimensional values, and so that has been revised as well. I believe that's also on the website. It is, I have to say, it's on there as an Excel document, so we should probably put it on as a PDF, so that no one can go in and change.
Yeah.
And then there were some specific changes that were made. Community choice, irrigation programs, grammar, insert Jules Assett's ink, and selected supplier. Code of Ethics being gender neutral again in grammar. In Chapter 21, Planning Board, gender neutral in term of members. So these are some of the things that were added in, or changes that were made. And I think that's all I have to say. And the next steps, do you, either of you have to...
You know, I would add, like, you know, that, 'cause Paul's done a very good summary of Phase Five, right, which is, you know, but I think it's, you know, the prior four and a half years consisted of the first four phases, which was, you know, a lot of work on a lot of topics that were, you know, selected. I guess that they were, the top, the 29 topics were selected by NYSRDA, right? Because they looked at the 2014 LWRP, which was never adopted, or NYSRDA did not believe it was ready to be adopted. I just wanna take a moment to go back in time. It's kind of funny. It's like, maybe it's my cold, but like, it's almost 10 years to the day that we sat in this room, and Marie was on the special board for the conference plan.
Karen.
Karen was on it. I think the jury box wasn't there, so we all sat back there.
Oh, yeah.
And I remember that day, 'cause I had a flyback from Richmond, Virginia.
Oh, my God, yes.
I do remember that.
And actually, the guy who gave up his seat, he was a co-counsel on the case with me. He's now on the other side of the case I'm on right now. It's just like, oh, God. Anyway, but we, you know, we were thinking like, okay, the whole point of the comprehensive plan is to have it, I mean, we use this metaphor, everyone uses, and we don't want this to be collecting dust on the shelf, right? It's gotta have, you know, it's gotta have legs. It's gotta actually be implemented. And I think, I think it's fair to say that are, there are certainly some things that were implemented. A lot of things were implemented along the way, have been, just, you know, like, I just think about the off-street parking requirement waivers. I mean, there are a whole bunch of other things that I think, over time, just common sense and issues come up that, you know, catalyzed action by the community, by the Village Board, to change the code and make things more sensible. But this is like, this is the whole shebang, right? This is like, you know, I mean, there were a lot of, I mean, all of this essentially comes from the comprehensive plan and the specific recommendations, which were, you know, fleshed out to a certain extent in the LWRS document, which was accepted technically by the Village Board, which led to the LWRP document. And, you know, so it's to say that there's, you know, there's a long process. It's an evolution. I think, you know, you indicated, Dave, that there may be, Mayor Dave, that there may be certain things that, you know, I mean, you know, you've had a chance to preview to see what, what, what is in there, but obviously, it's a very different thing to sit down and consider whether these provisions or these new zoning districts, new designations and requirements and so on and so forth should become the law of this village. That's a whole different responsibility. But I think it's, it's, I think for me personally, I'm sure for people who worked on this project or the comprehensive plan, going back to 2006, five, I mean, all the people, probably dozens, maybe even more than 100 people, it's like, you can say, well, this is like, this is, you know, we can say that this is, this is actually fulfilling the objective from, you know, those days, 10, 15 years ago. And, you know, I guess the other thing I would say is that, you know, there are issues that become hot issues, like obviously, short-term rentals is a huge, huge controversial, important issue. Lots of meetings recently. And there are certainly provisions in the draft code changes that address short-term rentals, and tried to make, you know, make it as kind of rational and clear as possible. Now, you know, my own personal view is that a lot of communities have adopted sort of standalone short-term rental laws, just to kind of make it, kind of address it all in one place. And that's not necessarily, that doesn't have to be the case at Cold Spring. It just, it's just, I think it's, I just raise that as an example, not to, not to be, we need to spend the next two hours talking about short-term rentals, but just to say that, I mean, you could adopt the provisions that are, you know, it's a definitional change, a change in R-1, change in R-3, et cetera. I mean, they're kind of, they're not all in one place. That's the point I'm trying to make, that it's not, we don't have a, a subsection or a subsection of the, of Chapter 134 zoning that addresses short-term rentals as a standalone thing, which could be fine. But it's just something to consider that, you know, in this consistency phase, it wasn't like we went back and like reinvented every single thing because we learned more over the last five years. With the exception of the comment that I, the letter that I sent to the Village Board. It wasn't, I don't think that's reinventing, but anyway, that, that's another thing entirely. But I would just say that the, you know, it is rewarding to see that this process, and, you know, thanks to NYSRDA, and thanks to all the people that have worked on this committee, and, and our consultant Green Plan, and, you know, the village attorney, John First, has provided a lot of feedback. I've been on this committee now for a year and a half, so, you know, I think it's, I think the process has been pretty good, that I feel, you know, has been, you know, gotten us to where we are now.
Karen. I don't really have anything to add, but, you know, you did bring up a good point about all the people that worked on the special board, you know, because we had those work groups, too. I think about, when I did the waterfront, and we had, I had 12 people in my work group. So it's, it's important to let whoever's still around, but there's a lot of people who are still around, know, hey, you helped out in this group, and look where we are. It, it went somewhere. Maybe, I don't know if it's a blurb, or maybe an announcement, or a grant, or something to just let people know the process continues, as you've just explained. That's, that's good, because it's bringing, it's, that was for something. And we, the village didn't just drop the ball or put those things up on a shelf and not do something with it. So that was an important point. I just wanted to emphasize that. Good job, village.
Yeah, and one more thing I'd just say, and I'll shut up, is, you know, in this time when we're like, there's a lot of bad feeling out there in USA land and in the world about government and distrust of government, and I think it is really important to emphasize that this process of like 10 to 15 years has actually, you know, achieved a whole lot, and hopefully will achieve a lot more. And, and that it is a, you know, everything in this, you know, that's on the website right now, and that map included, comes out of this community.
Okay, yeah. Important point.
It is.
Yes.
It is.
So I'd like to talk about, well, that's one, one kind of very granular aspect of this, which is that, that when we look through this code, we spend an inordinate amount of time talking about most aspects.
About what third?
Most aspects, and puzzling out how certain things came to be.
Right.
Sometimes they made sense. Sometimes, after we got to the bottom, they made no sense, and so we may have recommended those changes. And, and I think that in your analysis of what we're giving to you, you also are gonna have to do that similar thing. You're gonna have to get into it on a kind of granular level and find out, well, what were they thinking to do this? There were several things that came across in the code that we really were stumped by. And maybe you would be, too, that the difference is, though, that, that most of us are still around to talk to, whereas from the old code, from 71, we don't have the ability to go back and consult with the authors to find out why certain things were there. So while we're all to say that we're done and handing it to you and we're finished, we are around.
I think we talked, you know, at one of our last meetings about, you know, officially adjourning the Code Update Committee, but not like eliminating it or disstanding it.
Correct. It has not been.
You were just reappointed last night.
Right.
I don't know if you did that.
You were.
And that might, for volunteer hours and all that kind of thing, there might be other reasons to do that as well.
David, right, last night at the rearg meeting, the Code Update Committee, three members were reappointed in a consulting and advisory role.
Oh.
So there are no formal schedules, but I think the Village Board may come back to you and say, what was the logic or thinking behind why you went from this to that? Or, given this new information, what would you recommend be done in, in the light of everything that you've, that you've seen?
I think when I say that I appreciate what you do, I think from, you know, being involved in getting in-depth, just like you're saying, you're trying to find out why things are the way they are. I mean, I have to deal with that all the time here. So it's like, and there is no rhyme or reason to a lot of stuff. It's like, why is that street there? Who said they could do that, however? So that's one thing I appreciate. I think, also appreciate how, how things have changed so much, like, you know, in 50 years, 20 years, you know, whatever. There's, really, things have changed a lot, and you have to adapt to that. So to like, just as you, as this document sat, you know, for a while, it hadn't changed, that, you know, doing a total rewrite, you're going back to carnivals and services and bringing, yeah, and stuff like that. So, you know, I, you know, I appreciate how much you, you know, went through that, and just working on something, just like short-term rentals, trying to get something just a base, so we can work off of it. It's harder not to create, you know, you know, like, you know, new laws. So going through what we have already and looking at each one and having to, to, you know, revise it as much, you know, some of them definitely needed. So it's, it's, it's not an easy task, so that's why I totally appreciate it. You know, getting into it a little bit, I can see how long everything takes. You know, some people think everything should be done in a, you know, a week, it takes so long, you know, or you can read through that, and it should be done in whatever, and it's not the case. It takes a long time, and sitting there, you know, with an hour or something after you've worked all day, and you're tired, and you're, you're late, and you're trying to, you know, recreate stuff, you know, I totally appreciate it. So that's, you know, I just wanted to elaborate on my appreciation, and it's not just lip service, you know, I know, I know how much effort, and having, you know, having another job, full-time job, and coming in and doing this, you know, hopefully people appreciate it out in the community, because it's, it's a loss, and it's what's keeping our, our village what it is. And if we don't have people that do that, well, then we're working off of, you know, laws we're creating in another time. So, you know that. And we, we're trying to maybe have a couple extra meetings to actually just address these, like, instead of just one a week, we're gonna have a couple more, so that we're gonna try to move things forward, you know, as quickly as we can, and not just try to do it at a workshop meeting, which usually turns into a regular meeting. So we, last night, we were gonna, we haven't set the Tuesdays, there are a Wednesday date we were gonna have.
For January, yeah.
We were gonna set new, some dates.
Right.
Two a week, and just one dedicated to looking at, and Marie was gonna take chunks out of this and kind of go over those and see if we can get things going.
Right. So does anyone have any question?
I just have one question. What, what set the, the time for, for how long this takes and how we have a year from now to complete this? Like, what is the role? Is that NYSRDA, or?
Yes, so two, we have, we have two grants. The first grant, we can credit to Stephanie Hawkins, who applied for and was awarded for the village of Cold Spring, a six, I think it's, what was it?
I think ultimately, I think it was 75.
$75,000 to the village for costs associated with, with accomplishing the 29 objectives in the NYSRDA list. That, that grant, I think originally expired, the original expiration date was probably two years ago.
Oh, yeah. They thought it was gonna be done very quickly, and it kept on getting in.
Yeah, 'cause I think you got it in 2014, right?
Yep.
2013 or 2014?
Yeah, 2000, actually, it was 2000, the end of 2013, yeah.
Okay, so, so it, the end date expired, and we have requested extensions and requested extensions, and NYSRDA has been very accommodating. I just requested another extension. The end date used to be December 28th or something like that, 2019. So I requested another extension, but more importantly, I requested that we could get money around. The original grant required allocation of funds to very specific checkpoints.
Right.
This was done by the, the...
A prior generation of the...
The comprehensive plan, the CUC people back in 2014, 2015, with no knowledge as to how NYSRDA would, what NYSRDA required to get money.
Right.
And they front-end loaded the plan with money, and had very little money at the, at the end. The number of hours that John First has worked on the documentation that we sent him in the September, October timeframe is enormous, so we needed to move that money to back end of the plan. So NYSRDA is, that request went to NYSRDA. They're evaluating, they moved the end date to December 28th or something like that, 2020, with an additional three-month buffer, but they are going to hold us to December of 2020. Okay, that's one grant. The special board comprehensive, for the LWRP comprehensive plan, had a grant from Greenway.
I remember, yeah.
So I applied to Greenway, and that grant expired, let me say, two years ago. So I, I went back to Greenway.
That was for the LWRP, right?
Yes, and they didn't use the money.
Right.
So I went back to Greenway, and I think there was something like $7,000 left, something like. So I went back to Greenway and said, can we get an extension on this grant to complete the work for the NYSRDA grant, which is required for the LWRP? They agreed to an extension to this December and added money to the grant.
Okay.
So we now have $10,000 from Greenway. And they just sent us a letter. Instead of extending it by one year, they extended it by two years. So we have a grant going to 2021 with, with Greenway, which is, which is wonderful. But that is dependent upon the state's adoption of the LWRP.
Right.
So once...
Pressure's on.
Yeah, so, so, but I mean...
Is it the same $10,000 that extended for two years?
Yes. Yes, yes, we haven't, we haven't taken a penny of it.
It's gonna be worth like eight thousand in two years.
It'll have the buying power.
So, we've, we've got money that, um, Michelle, our village accountant, and I are working on to try to maximize use of that money, including the purchase of E-code. With the amount of changes that we're making to the, to the code, and Fran has been one of the main proponents of this, uh, with the amount of changes that we're making to the code, we need that tool desperately. We've got a couple of, of chapters that are two or three pages, but we've got chapters that are a hundred pages, and with just the headers and footers, um, it will save an enormous amount of time.
E-code is amazing, it's really, that's great, the village is gonna get that.
So what we need to do, and NYSERTA has agreed to consider the purchase of E-code under the NYSERTA grant, which was, my opinion, absolutely major. So, we may use a part of the money, we've got probably thirty thousand dollars left of the NYSERTA grant, and ten thousand from the Greenway grant. Um, E-code is gonna cost us about ten thou- ten to eleven, ten, eleven or twelve thousand dollars, which can be paid off in installments, so hopefully, we'll be able to make a big chunk purchase of the E-code, as well as pay for all of our legal fees and our consultants. So the first end date is next, next December for the, the village code, that we have completed the public hearings and incorporated all of the changes, and sent it off to the Department of State. And then the second checkpoint is December of two thousand twenty-one for the LWRP.
That was a long answer. I thought it was a short question.
What was, what was the question again?
That's a short one. So you guys screwed around a bunch, and now we're down under the wire.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Any other questions? So, so thank you for your efforts, uh, it, they really have paid off.
Thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you. You guys have been amazing.
Maybe we'll have time to come to a couple board meetings now.
That would be great, that would be great.
I'm sure it would be, no, what did you do here? Thank you so much for the running, for the doing, uh.
Is there any public comment or questions or anything on this guy here?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.